All righty, well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our August 2023 work session for the Barrow County Board of Education. We're excited to be onsite here at Austin Road Elementary, our beautiful new building. We had a great ribbon cutting today at 4:30 here. We were excited that we had such a great turnout and we got to tour the building. A lot of us saw it during the building process and then once it was complete, but I think today was extra special seeing the the student artwork and work on the walls and seeing, you know, coats and lost and found and all that fun stuff. It means it's lived in, it's doing what we built it for, so that's always good. So, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Next week at our board meeting, Ms. Malouf will have the invocation pledge. Appalachian High School JROTC cadets will be here to present the colors. We will approve some amended minutes, the agenda. We will have a clean school report from Ms. Bramlett. And then some superintendent recognitions. And let's move on down to the superintendent department reports. Dr. Bowen. Perfect, thank you, sir. All righty, down to business services report. Ms. Houston.
Good evening. We're gonna go over the invoices between $10,000 and $74,900. Is this good? All right. Our first one is New To You or NT, N2Y, and it's paid out of sped funds, $24,805 for unique learning systems and new-to-you renewal, and that's district-wide. Our next one is EMC Security, paid out of the general fund for $13,692, and that's security monitoring yearly service, then that's district-wide. Character Strong is paid out of ESAR funds for $21,572, and that's for our Character Strong curriculum. That's district-wide. GSBA, paid out of the general fund for $19,520, and that's our E-Board package. That's what actually is up here right now. We're also paying GSBA out of the general fund $25,325 for our GSBA yearly membership dues. Zones LLC paid out of the general fund for $11,850 for Adobe. That's the Creative Cloud site licensing agreement for the year, and that's district-wide. UshaSoft or USHA Soft paid out of the general fund for $14,882, and that's for our FTE tracker and our CPI tracker. It's very important for funding. Rosetta Stone is paid out of Title III, and that was for $10,000, and that's, of course, the Rosetta Stone renewal, district-wide. Charter System Fund Foundation paid out of the general fund for $10,000, and that's our yearly membership dues to our Charter System Foundation. Brightly Software paid out of the general fund for $18,648. It's a maintenance, all essentials, work order subscription that we have, and that's district-wide. Heartland Payment Systems paid out of school food nutrition for $23,949, and that's our annual school food nutrition software subscription. Gail paid out of the general fund for $10,225, and that was for 15 conference attendees this summer. Dell paid out of Capital Projects $14,400, and that's two camera servers, one at Austin Road Elementary School and one at C-FIT. Oconee River Just Stick Paid Out of the General Fund for $19,275, and that is participation in the Oconee Just Stick for K through eight teachers. That's 771 subscriptions for them, or participation, and that's district-wide. Southern Computer Warehouse paid out of Capital Projects Funds $20,420, and that's for 20 charging carts for Austin Road Elementary School. MBM Window Cleaning paid out of the general fund for $19,310, and that's for pressure washing all over the district. MBM Window Cleaning paid out of the general fund for $20,120, and that's for window cleaning throughout the district. Manning Brothers Food Equipment paid out of the school food nutrition for $11,936, and that's for all the smallwares, the startup equipment here at Austin Road Elementary School. And the last one is Scenario Learning, paid out of the general fund for $10,024, and that's our annual safety training for all Barrow County School employees for fiscal year 2024. And then down below are invoices between $10,000 and $74,999 that were already board-approved. And so that list, over the years, will get smaller and smaller. Do y'all have any questions?
I just have one. How is the GSBA membership dues based? What's it based on?
It's based on FTE, our student count.
Jennifer, I have a question on the MBM Window Cleaning, where it says general fund, and it has, there's two line items for that, the same day, but it says all, it says that it's for district-wide. Is there a reason there's two line items?
Two invoices. I just go over the invoices that are paid, so that those were two separate invoices, one for window cleaning and one for pressure washing.
Okay, that's fine. I misread it. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you.
All righty, system operations report. Mr. Purno.
Okay, good evening. We'll look at our current projects. We'll take one more spin around the elementary school, even though everybody got to see it today, and we'll rotate this off after this meeting. But excited to be here tonight, get to show this place off. And as Jordan said, you see it lived in a little bit, it's kinda neat. All right, so Basset II, which again, you probably saw that when you came in, or when you leave, you can take a lap around and see that up close and personal. But making good progress here, they've got the roof on. Got the insulation starting there, the foam insulation on the outside and the brick as well. So, it's really starting to take shape inside and out. The tennis courts, largely complete with those. We've still got some site work to do, sidewalks and landscaping, things like that. But they're just about ready. Get into next month, and then we should be able to have those turned over to us. And then, so these are our barns on Highway 81, and you got a little before and after photo there. Just getting that site cleaned up and giving it a new look. And some might, yeah. Right there on 81, you know, people driving by that, we wanna be proud of that, and we are. So, we're done with that now. I think they're finished with everything there, so. All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right, teaching and learning report, Dr. Moe. Planning and personnel, Ms. Banks. And strategic information services, Dr. Thompson.
Since we now have some more firm enrollment numbers as opposed to just the estimates we have on April, on Athens, or just give you a very short update on our red and orange ones.
Good evening. So, if you recall, at our last meeting, I told you we had a warm body count, as we call it, or the students that had walked in the door on the first day of school. And so now you can see, after 10 days, when a student does not come in the building, we drop them from our enrollment. And so that day 11 count marks those students, you know, our true enrollment after those kids have dropped off. And then we also do a 20-day count, because we generally do one every 20 days anyway. So then you can see the 20-day count, and we are still rising.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, for old business, I'm gonna invite Ms. Houston back up to talk about the purchasing policy update.
All right, last month, we talked about purchasing thresholds, and we came up with $75,000. So now I have put those numbers into the purchasing policy and updated it, redlined it, added the few words that we talked about before for related and aggregate, meaning that, you know, if you spend $75,000 for the full year, it needs to come before the board. And so that's the policy. So it's gonna have to sit for a month, and then you can vote on it. Is that how it works? Yes?
Yeah, well, it's from the meeting next, when they vote on it.
You're gonna vote, and then it will sit. Okay. Sorry.
So are we good to add this to consent agenda?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. All righty, down to new business. I'm gonna invite Dr. Moe up to talk about benchmark writing materials.
Good evening. I have the Benchmark Education Literacy Materials. You can see there's an attachment there with four items. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of the Benchmark Writing Workshop Teacher Kits, Student Consumable Materials, and Digital Platform Renewal for Grades K through 5 at Statham Elementary. These materials will provide students with practice and application of standards-based grade-level composition skills. The superintendent also recommends the purchase of Benchmark Decodable Text to provide students with decoding practice. The materials support district and individual school improvement plan goals, as well as the L4GA grant goals. And again, the sole source letter, the quote, there are three quotes that are attached there for your review as well. The financial impact of this is $35,000, and it will be funded through L4GA funds.
Any questions?
Is this something we've used in the past?
Yes.
And the teacher, please put the, okay, great. Thanks.
Consent agenda. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All righty, Dr. Wood, CTAE budget for school year '24.
Good evening. So every year, I bring before the board our CTAE budget that's given to us from the federal, our Perkins money, and our state funds. And on the next slide, you can see just a quick summary of that. So Perkins Five is the money that we get federally given to the state, and then the state allocates that to the school systems. And as our student enrollment goes up, we continue to see just a little bit of an increase in that year over year. So that's the total that we'll receive for our Perkins funds. We also receive a Perkins Plus Grant, which is in the amount of $20,000, and that goes to pay for our end-of-pathway assessments or our credentials of value. And so students at the end of their third level will take an assessment, and that, those funds pay to cover those testing of assessments. Then we get some state grants that support our teachers on extended day and extended year and youth apprenticeship. And so we have roughly 20 teachers that receive this type of funding. And these are for teachers to support our student organizations, so our TSAs, our DECA's, our FBLAs, and Skills USA. So those are for teachers to get that additional funding. They work extra from their regular workday. And so the state provides that portion, and the district also provides some funding for that. This year, we have one program going through industry certification, and that is our BASA Engineering Program. So as you know, our, last year, we had two schools, Wander Barrow and Appalachian, get their industry certification, and we're gonna recognize them at an upcoming board meeting. And this year, BASA will go through that. And so this is a brand-new program to get industry certified. And so the teacher and the school will receive a $10,000 grant to bring that lab up to industry standards. We also receive agricultural grants for our teachers that support their extended day and extended year, and that amount is shown there. And then this year, we will also receive our Young Farmer Supplement. And so that is Caitlin LaValle-Thomas, and so she serves in that role, and that's a $5,000 grant that she gets to do. In addition to, she does the young farmer, in addition to her other duties and responsibilities as a teacher and an ag teacher. So that is a summary of all of the grants and budget that we submit to the state. So every year, I have to bring that to you for your approval, and then I can move forward with all of the budget stuff in our platform. So I'm also excited to mention that we do try to look for additional grants. And so last week, we just submitted a $150,000 grant we're applying for, for Electronic Vehicle Program. That will be out at BASA in the engineering program, and so we're hoping to get that. And with that, we will get, hopefully, to electric vehicles that the students will be able to put together and learn all the EV stuff that is coming our way. So that's in addition to that, if we get that grant. So, super excited about that. To be continued. So, any questions about CTAE, the CTAE budget?
Everybody good? Consent agenda? All righty, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, Mr. Purno, State Capital Atlay Application.
Okay, so last month, we brought you an item of information for our FY '25 application with the state, and this is for Performing Arts Center. And we'll go right outside here between the classroom pod and Basset II. And the state has reviewed that application and approved of it. And so the next step is for us to bring that to you all and get your approval. And so we're asking the superintendent to recommend acceptance and approval of the Barrow County School System's FY '25 state application, capital atlay application, and start date forms for construction of the new Performing Arts Center at BASA and the Innovation Campus. And so, you know, we've got our architect on board, a construction manager, and look to begin that project this fall. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions? Consent agenda? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All righty, Ms. Houston. We'll invite you back up to talk about the purchase and sale agreement for the Rutland facility.
All right. So Barrow County School System, in addition with 12 other school districts, owns six acres over in Athens, Georgia, that house the Rutland Center. The appraised value is $7,950,000. Since the center has closed, the district would like to sell their portion of the property to Clark County Schools. Barrow County School owns 9.45%, and is to receive $751,275, less any prorated share of outstanding assessments or utility bills, attorney costs, closing costs, stuff like that. Closing will be held on September 30th, 2023. So we're being asked to sign this agreement when y'all vote on it next month and get that over to Clark, or RISA. And RISA will coordinate the sale of this building.
Any questions? Consent agenda? All right, so thank you so much. And then you can keep on going with senior tax exemptions.
All right. So the Senior Property Tax Exemption Committee met twice this month. We were really determined that we wanted to try to make a decision, or you wanted to make a decision, to get it over to our legislators so they could get it ready to vote on in January when it goes to the state. So what, we had some great conversations, and Dan Murphy is also here. He was through, he was there at both of those committee meetings, so if you have any questions, you can ask him, too. So let me remind you of what our current exemption is. 62 and older, if your earned income limit is $20,000, excluding retirement income of $80,488, you were allowed an exemption of $20,000, which would be an exemption of about a $50,000 home. They also have a second exempt, we also currently have a second exemption for 62 and older. And if your earned income limit was 250% of poverty, excluding retirement income, you could get an exemption amount of $80,000, which would cover a $200,000 home. The committee met, and the consensus was that from age 62 to 69, you can earn income of $60,000 excluding retirement income, and the exemption will be $140,000. And that exempts, that equates to a home value of $350,000. Then once you get to 70, you can, your earned income limit can be $113,000 excluding retirement income, and the exemption amount will be unlimited. Three caveats that we came up with, too, is the value of homes will be frozen when they apply for the exemption, which will help if and when home values increase. So that will help, we won't have to adjust the money all that much, because the value will be frozen as soon as they come in, and they'll, they can unfreeze it if house values decline. Seniors shall not receive this exemption if there are minor children residing in the homestead unless such children are the natural or adopted children of the person or are foster children under the care of the person, or are children for whom the person has been appointed guardian. And then the third caveat is this exemption shall be in lieu of and not in addition to any other homestead exemption applicable to the school district ad verum taxes for educational purposes. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just a quick second and thank everyone that got together three times, the committee members, especially Jessica Garrett, our tax commissioner, who's here if you have any questions. And Guy Rogers, Sheri Lacrimosa from the Texas Census Office, too. Spent a lot of time and effort helping us hammer this out and get it done. And I think it'd be a really good boon for our senior citizens.
I also wanna mention that we need to really publicize that, once this does occur, they're gonna have to go down and fill out a form, one time, one time only, okay, unless something changes. But I think we need to really publicize that, because I'm afraid some people are gonna think, you know, it's passed, and so if they haven't been getting exemption before, this would just mean they wouldn't continue to get it. So I really think it's important that we make sure that we put it out everywhere when this goes into effect.
We also have to remember that this is going to the state for approval, and then it comes back to our citizens for votes. So we've done our part, and now we will move it on to the state, and then it'll come back to our citizens.
And Dan, have you been in contact with our legislators?
We have, yes.
Okay.
I have one here with us.
Yes, we did. Thank you.
All righty, next, we will discuss the 2024 Board Training Plan.
E-Board apparently just went down on us. I don't know if it's us, or I think it's probably E-Board itself, but I think we can get through the rest without it. But the Training Plan is the one most you've seen before. It's the one that goes to the Department of Education. More of a generic at this point, and we'll fill in as we go forward. So that piece, be ready to go for y'all to vote on, and so we can send it on in.
Okay, everybody good to add that to consent agenda? All righty, and then the board meeting dates are there as well.
Have those in your folder. Do those.
All right, consent agenda with those. All right, and then the last thing we'll talk about today is the update to local legislation regarding the appointment of board members. Right now, it's unclear of timelines, when we do what.
Yeah, well, right now, it's pretty much, it was set up in, I guess, the early 70s to, if there's an opening for any reason during a term that the board appoints. And I think that was fine, the couple of times we did it when it was pretty late in the term. But we had some pretty good discussion about, you all did, about when it's someone that's in the first week or two, as we had happened, that that, probably not the way we, probably not the fairest thing for the goal. We are, it worked out very well for us, and always has. But we wanted to make some modifications for that, and since we're gonna be carrying legislation down this session anyway, we wanted to go ahead and get that discussion going again and see where y'all want it to be on that. So really, the floor is open for you all to discuss.
Well, I'll start out by saying that when I read it, I thought, okay, we're halfway there, because we have 45 days to appoint someone as opposed to 15, which doesn't really give us time to even.
And that was actually a change that we made in 2015, I think.
Yeah, so there's that. But then the other thing is, I haven't talked to anybody, including myself, I do talk to myself sometimes, who thinks it's a good idea if there's two or more years left on somebody's term for eight of us to be making a decision about who that's gonna be. It should be up to the voters in the county. So I really wanna see something in this legislation that says if we have an opening where the, I don't even have a problem with having if the term is, you know, I guess we can determine that, but at least if there's two years or more left on a term, then we put it before the voters. We can still do, we can still do a temporary appointment.
Yeah, that's in the, that's in the law.
And then schedule the election, because depending on when it happens, that could be like six months or eight months down the road.
Do we know what our peers are doing? Like our other, like surrounding counties, what they're doing for this?
Dan? Dan's probably got some information on that.
What are peers, the counties surrounding us, what are they doing for?
Well, probably most commonly, you'll see folks go with a default state rule, which is if there's two or more years remaining in the term, and then if it's 90 days before the, that general election, then you appoint someone, and then there's an election at that general election. So, you know, that means you appoint somebody for a couple of months, then there'll be a special election in two years. I think that 90 days has to do with simply the election superintendent be able to get everything prepared for the special. And if there's less than two years, then you appoint someone for the remainder of the two years. And that's what I most commonly see.
So basically, we could just go along, we could just, we could.
Yeah, we could mirror that. Actually, the way it works is if we simply repeal any local legislation, to the contrary, the state rule, you know, by default becomes the rule. And we have to decide if we wanna do that exactly, but that's what.
So that would be simple, right?
That'd be easier.
Yeah, if we're completely satisfied that we just wanna mimic the state rule exactly, then.
Do you, Dan, you probably don't have this up in mind, but the one thing we did change was that we had the 15-day in there to the 45-day, because if we repeal, would that change, you know?
If we repeal the entire act, then there's not a time limit on when the board appoints a successor.
So that was local legislation.
Yeah, yeah, that trigger was local. So if we wanted to include something like that, then we wouldn't just do away with our rule and default to the state. We'd develop a new rule that is 95% in line with the state, and then add whatever would happen as a trigger.
But the state, to be clear, the state rule does not have a minimum amount of time.
Does the board appoint this successor?
Yes.
It doesn't have a trigger.
Then miss it all.
No. It just says the board shall do it, but it doesn't give you a deadline.
So that we can choose on our own, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Then we can choose on our own, right? If they don't have a set time or a schedule.
Yes, yes, we, if we wanted to follow the general state framework, if there's more than two years, there'll be a special election. We'll appoint someone till the special. If there's less than two years, we appoint someone for the remainder of the term. And then we wanna set our own trigger in terms of how long we have to appoint that person, whether it's just till the special or if it's for the remainder of two years, we can do that. We had, at one point, we had 15, then we amended that to say 45. We could do whatever we like.
I'm sure there was a reason back when they did that for it, but I don't think we probably have that reason anymore.
I think I recall, the issue with the 15 was it was just too fast to get through.
Yeah, well, that and the one back in the early 70s.
I would like to know what that reason was in the early 70s.
Probably had something to do with bringing school system together, would be my guess, but.
I like that positive thing you got going there. So are we agreed? I think 45 days needs to be in there, because we do need to. It don't need to be without representation on board, anywhere in the county, in the first place. So that 45 needs to be there, and that 15's crazy, because we were really scrambling there to try to do that.
Even when people get their stuff in that fast.
Yeah, exactly. Plus getting word.
But the 15, neither one, 15, 45's not in the normal.
Correct.
So we can set that, we can set, y'all could just say, when we, if we have, if we ever have an opening, you could say we need this done in 45 days. We don't have to have that in the law.
Okay, that's fine.
I think that's probably the smart way. We just need to repeal it.
Okay.
Just follow the state law, regulation, all that.
Yeah, we could in policy, in some of our governors' policy.
Yeah, we may have to change in our policy and bring that to a little bit later.
Everybody? Everybody in agreeance?
Now, if you don't have the verbiage, we'll, we'll get something written up between now and the board meeting and if y'all, so y'all get it to you so you can preview it and then just, if you're comfortable with it, you can vote on it at the board meeting next week at work.
Thank you, sir.
Problem solved.
Alrighty, next week we'll vote on authorization for committees to meet. Ms. Malouf, Ms. Stevens, and myself will do our, the September Visit Clean and Safe Schools. And now at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal for periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, and to discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, authorize ordering an appraisal related to the acquisition of or disposal of real estate, enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property subject to approval in a subsequent public vote, and enter into an option to purchase, dispose of, or lease real estate subject to approval in a subsequent public vote.
Yes.
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 Alrighty.
We're actually going to go across the hall. They have it set up in.
You guys get to stay and discuss.
My name is Lance McNamara. I'm the Health Service Manager, Athletic Trainer for Barrow County School System. We're at Winderboro's High School Practice today, covering football. And one of the things that we're always concerned about this time of the year is looking at heat illnesses, environments, things of that nature. So today, we're going to discuss a little bit about what the athletic trainers do at Appalachia High School, at Bassa, as well as Winderboro High School. Athletic trainers play a key role in the safety of the student athlete. We're involved in injury prevention, injury recognition, rehabilitation, counseling, but probably one of the key things is looking at environmental conditions. This unit here is called a Wet Bulb Globe Temperature Unit. Many years ago, we would kind of focus on what's called a heat index. Heat index is great. It focuses on heat, the dry temperature, as well as humidity. Wet bulb has been used by the United States Military, primarily the Marine Corps, and they use three components: the radiance of the sun, the humidity that we have, as well as a dry temperature. That gives a mathematical computation, and then that point gives a number, and that number determines what modifications that we utilize for practice. So that number could be a green flag, a yellow flag, an orange flag, red flag, and a black flag. A black flag. When this, when this device gets to ninety-two percent, we have what's called a black flag, which means there's no physical activity whatsoever. When the number gets below ninety-two, we get to ninety to ninety-two, we're in what's called a red flag. That red flag is based upon time. We do not allow athletes to participate in the weather for more than sixty minutes. They have no equipment on whatsoever. But within that sixty minutes of activity, they're really only performing forty. They do twenty minutes of water rest breaks embedded. We get to orange. Orange is from eighty-nine down to eighty-six. Orange means that we just have to watch the at-risk individuals. We be sure that we have at least four water breaks per hour within a two-hour practice. We get down to yellow, which is below our eighty-six, and that's discretionary. We just kind of have to make sure our kids are, have access to water. We give them plenty of water breaks and we kind of watch the at-risk. Anything below eighty-two is called green, which we don't have many issues from that. However, when we get to the score of eighty-eight, we also have to set up what's called a cool zone. So over here, a cool zone is that we happen to have a shade of tent. We have a water immersion tank that we can drop thirty gallons of ice water into a tank, about fifty-eight degrees. We then place the individual into that tub and we reduce our core temperature quite effectively. So hopefully we never have to get to that because we are monitoring. We have unlimited water breaks for the student athlete, and because of our athletic trainers and our coaches, we focus on the students. In conclusion, Barrow County Schools is committed to student safety, not just in the classroom, but also in the athletic environment. We have athletic trainers. It has their responsibility to work with our coaches to be able to identify potential injuries, whether it be through this competition, play, or the environment. So again, we've got some very good policies and procedures set in place to protect the student athlete. Thank you again, and remember, go Dogs, go Wildcats, go Blazers.
Hello, my name is Brittany.
My name is Amber Bautista.
Gail Garcia.
Natalia Tureko.
Ricardo Rubio Rivera.
My name is Snowy.
Tabita Mitrick.
Marco.
My name is Rosa.
Karen Garcia.
Ms. Kiara.
Juan Martín.
Alexis Alenales Mayavas.
Alexis Lem.
Lisette.
I am Jesus.
Jennifer Jimenez.
Fernando.
Juan Esteban.
Satish Shava.
Yarin San.
I'm Esteban Galindo. I'm from El Salvador.
The Barrow County Newcomer Academy was established in 2017 with the purpose of supporting high school students as they transition to life in the United States. Since its inception, the Newcomer Academy has served students coming from all over the world with many different language backgrounds. Instructors work closely with students to develop their English proficiency and provide support in their academic classes. Additionally, the Newcomer Academy serves to support students with the many unique challenges of adapting to life in a new culture surrounded by a new language. This means everything from previewing each day's lunch menu and discussing the foods being served, to assisting students in researching and planning for future careers.
We accept students from all over the world and become a close-knit family, so their cultures automatically come in with them in organic and inorganic ways.
We can put aside the fitting in because they find a commonality in their differences that they're not going to find in the larger high school.
Getting to know our students and their backgrounds and sharing with each other, that's kind of like the foundation where we go from and everything is based on that.
Newcomer has been so great in providing that community and those people that they feel comfortable talking to, asking questions, to show them the ropes and what, just how to navigate the day.
And they also work with them on some of their academic deficits. And so when they come back to me in the classroom, I see improvement from them that they got from the Newcomer Academy.
When newcomers arrive in the U.S., they are often overwhelmed and apprehensive about their new surroundings. They are in desperate need of a safe space to adjust and an advocate they can rely on. The Newcomer Academy is honored to play this role in students' lives until they feel confident and prepared to move on independently. Even after transitioning out of the program, instructors maintain communication with students, families, and colleagues, allowing for a gradual release into the mainstream classes.
First, I didn't want to go to school because I was like, oh, they're going to speak another language and I don't know how to speak it.
Leaving friends, leaving family, leaving your background and moving to a new place, it is hard.
Sometimes it's hard because I, when I speak, when, when I try to speak English, it's so difficult for me.
When I saw that there was like a lot of people like in my situation, it kind of made it, made me feel like I was not alone.
They help people from other countries and they make them feel like part of, of the U.S. They make, they make them feel like home.
Newcomer students typically stay in the program for one academic year, depending on their specific needs. During their time in the Newcomer Academy, students are supported and cared for by our passionate newcomer team, who welcome and respect the diverse cultures represented. The Newcomer Academy instructors work closely with students and families to address specific needs, monitor student progress, and connect families to community resources to help each and every student thrive.
The most important goal of the Newcomer Academy is to make our students feel safe, comfortable, and accepted. We want our students to have a place and a face that is familiar, where they know that their needs will be met and that someone will advocate for them.
We really become a family and they have each other to support, to offer the support, and they have us. It takes some work to get through, but that is our daily goal.
I care about these students and I want them to be successful. So it makes me really proud when they come back from Newcomer Academy and I can tell that they've been working on certain communication skills or academic skills and they just, I see them grow so much throughout the course of the year and it just makes me really proud of them. Allowing them to know that they have our support and our help in any way that they need us is the most powerful thing that we can offer.
The teachers are really able to get to know their students, to wrap their arms around them as newcomers, while also teaching them important academic skills and helping them to acquire the language. It's a remarkable program and it's very important to the Barrow County community.
The students and teachers at the Newcomer Academy are a close-knit community of people who support one another and value cultural inclusion. Students learn and grow alongside their peers, who are also experiencing similar challenges of adjusting to new culture and language. The Newcomer Academy instructors employ culturally responsive teaching and work hard to ensure equity of opportunities for newcomer students.
It's a very good program for the people to arrive to United States.
They make feel better and comfortable.
The academy is maybe the best thing for people like me.
It makes me feel like I'm not the only one that is trying to learn other language and, and starting a new life.
Ms. Wilson and Ms. Ry were the best teachers that I had in my life. Like really, they're so nice.
When you need help in, in your class, they help you.
It has been a great help for me and to improve my English.
The teachers can explain what we know, understand.
Our teachers care about us in school and out.
I really like the support you give me and give us and my classmates.
Helps a lot and it's a good program.
Each day you're going to be there, it's going to be better.
During the 2020, 2021 school year, the Newcomer Academy expanded to serve elementary and middle school newcomers through virtual learning environments. The next few years will continue to show growth as the program expands to reach and serve newcomers of all ages. Working with newcomers is challenging and rewarding work. The Newcomer Academy is proud to continue the tradition of being Barrow Bold.
I can't imagine these students without this program. I think that in and of itself shows how valuable the program is.
I hope the program grows to meet the needs of our students and our growing ESOL population. I hope we're able to add instructors and serve students from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade.
I think that that was probably one of the best years of my life when I was in U Comers.
Newcomer Academy is the best academy in the world.
I love Newcomer Academy.
For more information about the Newcomer Academy, visit our website or follow us on social media.
Project Search is a very unique transition program, different from anything we have in Barrow County. It started at Cincinnati Children's Hospital in Ohio in the mid nineteen nineties, and now there are six hundred and ten sites in forty-seven states and ten countries, including right here in Barrow County. To participate in Project Search, a student has to be a Barrow County student between the ages of eighteen and twenty-two, with barriers to employment such as intellectual or developmental disabilities. They have to be finished with their high school graduation requirements and willing to defer graduation until the end of their Project Search year. It's during that year that they come to the Winder Housing Authority here at the Wimberly Center, and they participate in three rotations that last anywhere from ten to twelve weeks. They have a manager and a mentor that they report to and work alongside, along with skills training with our partners. And it's just a really unique program because the end goal is part-time or full-time employment for the interns.
Here at the Wimberly Center, the Project Search students are learning a variety of different skills. They're learning data entry, they're learning accounts payable, payroll, records retention, they're learning how to shred, environmental services.
Restaurant sanitation, doing a lot of washing dishes and helping clean floors. There's a good aspect of prep, some general prep cook.
I do dishes, I do put, it teaches you, if he wasn't walking out of kitchen, how to do business correctly. I'm teaching them how to answer the phone, how to take messages, how to respond to, interact with people coming into the facility.
Well, my first internship was in the front office, like in the receptionist area, and I learned how to like copy papers, scan stuff into the computer, answer the phone, and mail out letters.
We're cutting grass, we're harvesting crops, we're doing weeding, we're doing some irrigation work, digging, pretty much anything when it comes to working on the farm, we try and tackle it.
Well, my first internship, I learned how to cut grass, which I never learned how to do that.
The skills that the interns are learning through my department are their maintenance skills, they're learning lawn care skills, we're doing janitorial skills.
We both have rams, we both.
My task is to go along beside them and make sure that they have a good understanding of what the job is that they are being asked to do, and for me to make sure that they are able to do it, and then I kind of back away and let them do their thing.
I learned how to use a knife better in culinary, and then I learned how to use a drill, like putting pressure on it is a good way to use a drill like that.
They learn how to appropriately interact in a real workplace. It's not simulated in a classroom. It is an actual place of business.
We go over important topics like interview preparation, resumes, how to keep a job, job searching, how to deal with conflict resolution, work with different bosses, just a lot of different topics to prepare them for the workplace.
A lot of the things that our, our employees are doing, a lot of repetitive tasks and things of that nature, things that we are able to have the Project Search students handle, and they do it quite well. And so it's just a cool collaboration and you have a lot of teamwork and synergy. So I love it. I've enjoyed having them.
They bring an excitement that, to general tasks that we kind of take as mundane tasks, but they bring excitement to that. And it really, you know, invigorates us to get excited about some of the things that we just take for granted.
Project Search has been an amazing benefit for all four of our interns this year. Without it, I'm not sure that they would have even known what they were capable of doing.
We get to both learn things. We get to get some work done and have a good time doing it.
What I like about it is because I keep my, it keeps me moving, it keeps me busy, and it really helps me how to be able to do it, get a job.
Well, I think Project Search benefits the community because it is opening up an opportunity for students that have some type of a learning disability to be employed.
We don't want these kids leaving our school system at age twenty-two and not having a clear direction, not having somewhere to go and feel needed and feel productive and really demonstrate what their true abilities are.
It's been very much a learning experience, I think, on both ends, and very enjoyable. They seem to always have a good attitude and to show up ready to work.
It's very educational for the interns and for us because we learn how to teach them.
It's teaching everybody something, the staff plus the interns. Everybody's learning. Plus, we're getting, you know, once they get acclimated to what we're doing, they're able to assist and help, which speeds things along. It benefits the company as a whole.
You get to work with new people and you get to, you get to learn new things and stuff.
I believe it, it offers them just some real-world experience through these internships. I've, I've just really been honored to be part of it.
Project Search benefits the community by letting people from the community interact with the Project Search students. So people that may have had some stigma against people with disabilities get to meet these kids and realize they're just like anybody else and, and get to learn from that experience.
The Project Search students have grown quite significantly just in the short time that they've been here. They seem to be very happy to be here.
I've just been constantly blown away and I find myself bragging to my family and friends about the skills and the abilities that the interns have gained throughout this course of, of the, of the school year.
I think that their courage has grown, their determination to do things has grown. I just feel like that they're more confident in themselves now that they're working with us. So I've seen the project interns grow during my time with me by just really learning that they can do things that they didn't think they could do before, and doing some tasks that they haven't done before and really enjoying it.
I love being able to see what the interns are going to be doing and be able to see how accomplished they are at each one of their tasks. I had no idea that they were all capable of so much.
They have a great attitude. They.
They have a great attitude, they are very motivated, and I've just been impressed with them.
Project Search students have really changed the culture by making it a happier workplace, and you know, that not only includes the Wynder Housing Authority, but all of our partners under roof. It's made it a happier place to be.
I would say it's brought everybody closer together. They love the environment of working with the interns, kind of brings happiness to the whole group as a whole here in the Wimberly Center, working with them.
I can't imagine having our Project Search program anywhere else because of the welcoming impact the Wynder Housing Authority staff has had on us.
I enjoy being here every day and learning new skills, and it's a perfect way to learn what a job world will look like in the future. I feel good about walking here because we get to learn new experience and knowing that it's not the same job over again, you get to know different stuff and how to do that, different jobs.
It's really gotten me someplace that I've really enjoyed.
I believe these Project Search participants have a great chance to perform and not only just get a job, but to excel.
And we need for the community to get behind us and really give these kids the opportunity that they deserve. The community's going to end up with some pretty fantastic employees.
I just think it's a great opportunity for these interns. It's something that they'll never forget, and we will never forget here either. Even if moving forward, we are not the direct mentors, I'd still would love to have some sort of involvement with Project Search, it's meant a lot to us. It's just an awesome opportunity to pass something along to somebody who might never get the opportunity to do that, and we're giving them that opportunity, so I think it's a great thing.
Their dreams of the future has changed. They have realized that they can do what they dream to do, and there's resources for them to be able to do it.
I like Project Search because it's taught me a lot more than any other place that I've been in.
I would definitely do Project Search again.
I will, but Project Search.
My name is Jordi Bohannon. I'm an English teacher at Appalachia High School. I've been working here for seven years. I teach AP Language to 11th graders and reading support to 9th graders. I'm also the Student Council sponsor, assistant girls' basketball coach, co-sponsor of the International Travel Club, and the academic coach for the football team. On a daily basis, I typically wake up around 6:30, leave the house at 7:15 in order to be at work by 8:00. Throughout the day, we have four, an hour and a half long blocks, three for instruction and one for planning. After school, I typically am out the door by 5:00. Obviously, during basketball season, that time becomes any time between 6:00 p.m., 10:00 p.m., often later. So with our 8 to 4 workday, I'm usually here at least one extra hour and often a few more after that. I really enjoy teaching high school because I think students are at this really interesting moment in life where they are still kids, but they're preparing for what's going to come next, whether they're going to enter the workforce, or go on to college, or even join the military. So they're at this really transitional phase where I think you can have a huge impact. When it comes to building relationships with students, I think that care and respect is just like the ultimate cornerstone of that. You have to show them love and care and respect in order to get that in return, in order for them to trust you, and I think trust is a huge component. One thing that I want people outside of the profession of education to understand about teaching is that teachers are experts in both their content area and the science of pedagogy. I think a lot of people assume that because they went to school, they understand what teachers do, but what you see from a student perspective is so little of the whole picture. So a lot of my lesson planning happens during my planning block each day, but I also have a 45-minute lunch duty during that time as well, and this is one of the spaces where our professional learning communities are really helpful because we're able to meet as a group on a content area team and really get a lot of that work done together through that collaboration or split that work up. And so I think the biggest challenge with planning is asking ourselves, where do we need our students to go? What do we need them to know, do, and understand? And then the plans become like how we get them there from where they are right now. It's tricky because those plans are always changing. They have to be flexible, and they have to be reflexive, and they have to move, which is what makes it difficult because it's something you have to work on every day, rather than at the beginning of the unit or at the end of a unit in order to revise for next year. The first thing teachers have to do is be willing to de-center their own experiences and themselves in order to prioritize the experiences of their students. I think successful teachers have to believe that all people can and also want to do well both in the classroom and in life at large. And then on a more literal level, oh gosh, there's planning and instruction and collaborating with our peers and analyzing data and building relationships and, you know, hearing about heartbreaks and giving advice, and oh wow, it's just so, all of the above.
Is your child interested in the arts, sciences, and a way of learning that encourages him to explore and grow? Then we have the place for you. The Arts and Innovation Magnet Program, or AIM, is an innovative, arts-integrated, STEAM/STEM program of choice for 6th through 8th grade students that focuses on project-based, hands-on, student-centered learning. The AIM program provides families with an optional model for middle school education that is designed to maximize student engagement and depth of learning through lessons and assignments that are real-world, rigorous, and relevant. AIM students arrive each day knowing they will be engaged in a variety of ways through innovative and integrative learning experiences, such as choreographing and performing dances, writing and performing plays, or designing and building robotics. Self-motivated students who are willing to work with groups and step outside their comfort zone will thrive in this environment. Students attend the AIM program on the Center for Innovative Teaching Campus, also known as CFIT, where they receive all their core content and elective instruction while utilizing unique spaces like the dance studio, Black Box Theater, Makerspace, and Music Lab. After attending core content classes, students are encouraged to focus on various unique opportunities through daily exploratory connection time at AIM mini academies, where they can explore agriculture and food science, culinary arts, community of arts, dance and choreography, digital media arts, engineering and technology, theatrical production, and visual art and design. Students take traditional quizzes and tests while in the AIM program, but they are also expected to demonstrate mastery of learning through created artifacts, live demonstration, personal performance, peer leadership, and project completion while collaborating with others. If your child is interested in engaging, project-based, hands-on, student-centered learning where they can explore and develop their passions, then apply to the Arts and Innovation Magnet Program today.
Hey, my name is Ellen Petrie. I'm the School and Community Relations Specialist for the Barrow County School System. I had the pleasure of working with 31 churches, four civic clubs, and about 10 or 12 businesses for our backpack drive this year. We are just thrilled with the outpouring of love for our children and for the great school year they're going to have. We had a huge host of volunteers here, and everyone coming together in this community to help support our children.
We are having so much fun out here today giving away these backpacks, and honestly, we could not do any of this without our amazing volunteers. So we have almost 50 people here, kids, adults, senior adults, all helping us give these backpacks to our community, and so it is honestly the most incredible morning.
Yes, it's amazing, and one great thing is that we partner with all Barrow County schools. So it's been so cool for me to see so many families I know through Auburn Elementary, Westside, and every other school. It's just amazing, and we're having a great day.
Hi, I'm Faith Baldin. I'm a lieutenant with the Barrow County Sheriff's Office, and I'm here this year for the Back to School Bash. I've been doing it many years now. We have a large amount of volunteers from schools, communities, families. They all come together for one purpose, and that's to serve the students of Barrow County. And it's an awesome event. It takes a lot of work, a lot of time, but at the end, it's worth it when we can put those book bags in the car and wish them a very good day and to have a happy and safe school year.
I love the opportunity to see families and be able to give to them resources, and the book bags make them smile, and so it's an opportunity as a social worker for me to actually do something for them, as opposed to sometimes when I meet with families, it's not always a positive exchange, and so this is a positive exchange.
Alrighty guys, welcome back. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Stevens, Ms. Malu, all in favor? Alright, motion passes. And then we also need a motion to approve the contract for Mr. Richard Garland.
So moved.
Ms. Kelly, Ms. Stevens, all in favor? Alrighty, motion passes. Notice the next meeting dates. We will meet next Tuesday at the PDC, August 1st for our call board meeting. Have a good night.
Thursday, right?
Yes, and then Thursday for the superintendent evaluation, 5:30 at the PDC. Alrighty, you guys have a good night.